Table? We need to table.
Yeah, we 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 moved to table.
I want to table.
I'll second, all in favor.
Aye, aye.
Okay.
Skip the discussions.
You you're gonna skip the discussion.
Depends.
Okay. Okay. So let's call new business, who's here for eighteen? Rice Riceam Street, please. Anybody here for eighteen Riceam?
Oh, who's here?
Yeah, so these all these things.
Hey, um, Carrie, can we turn off on A three A?
What a night. Charlie, what's Charlie?
I hope there's no bother who's on Zoom who wants to make your comments in the last couple hours.
Uh, we was recording on the laptop, so it's nice. We're hoping that goes so loud.
What is it now?
Was it A three or A three A you want?
A three A. I guess I'll start it. Anthony Bourbon, lot sixty eight Eaton Street for we came to Riceam Street. So we were at discussed this project a few months ago as a discussion item. We've got our ZBA approval for it now. So we're back for the official discussion here. And that is, this is proposing redoing the back roof of this existing existing house, back second floor and roof. Guess since we don't have a three A or?
I have it.
At the front of the of what it's going to look like, that's what it looks like, right?
We don't know this, right? Yeah, so.
You you said three A?
Yeah, so there's A three, A three A and A three B.
Alright. Okay, great.
Yeah, okay, Curtis. Okay, so this is basically the the top shows existing and the bottom shows proposed. How we're redoing that back roof and dormers. So you can see the the front facade sort of minimal changes to the front, just cosmetic changes which we'll talk about in a moment. And the real changes are just to that second floor. Roof fridge with the dormer and fridge height. And then if we go to A three B, please. A three B. Okay, so there in the back you'll see once again, the top is the existing and the bottom is proposed. So that is the the rear elevation and the other side elevation there, how we're changing changing that. So we're not changing the footprint of the building at all. Sort of minimal increase in in square footage. It's really just to get a little more volume in the back room, in the back of the second floor, make it more useful. And that's it for the for the changes for the changes to the building to blow. And then just some cosmetic changes that we're planning. If you wanna go, sorry, Carrie, she could go to A three, just play A three this time.
Carrie. A three.
Sorry.
It's very top, no, your tabs are open.
I know, but it's his, how he said that was individually dropdown, it's not a full thing, so I.
No, but it's across your tabs across the top line.
So what what page now?
A three.
I hate being a funny big screen.
So basically, there all of the original windows on the house have been replaced over time, front door has been replaced. So this idea here is just kind of bring it into a little bit more consistency and and do, you know, new windows and a new front door, new front door surround as well. Yeah.
So have you examined the window sashes?
Oh, yeah, there those windows on the front, they're margin windows. They were replaced fairly recently, too.
Yes.
Because if you look at the old older Google Street views and even some older photographs I have of that house, that dormer in the front wasn't there.
Right.
And the windows in the front were probably the original windows, so they were replaced fairly recently, I don't know why.
I remember when it was done, I mean, they came to us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I think the only thing about about that we kind of object to is when they've replaced those windows in the front, they just replaced the sashes, they didn't replace the whole frame, so they're actually a little bit smaller than what the windows were originally, because they just kind of put them in the existing frame, so this idea here is just kind of correct that and go back to the original size of those windows in the front.
Okay, so that's very important, so you do, you think you may have the original window openings.
Right.
In the front or wherever.
Yeah.
And that tells and that leads to the sizing of the windows themselves.
Right. Okay.
So there's a little detail that we should probably discuss, that I don't want you to end up with a window pane, it's eight and three quarters. You know, like that, it's gotta be seven by nine. And that and that should tell you that, so that's something we should check. I'm actually more concerned about your doorway. I know you come up with a rather wonderful application of a Greek revival door. And I guess the door's a difference.
I guess, yeah, it's like a.
But what about your doorway? You've come up with a wonderful Greek revival doorway. But can you can you explain how you came up with that?
Um, just looking at.
You you love it.
You actually like it.
Yeah.
So the problem I have with that is I think we need to do a little investigation. Okay, because this may be a much lovelier version of Greek revival than it ever was. And that's not an objective, I mean.
It's a common, this is a common man's.
We don't, we don't, we don't, with respect is genuine. We have to move forward, so maybe not to delay this indefinitely, though I think it's important that we not gussy gussy on.
Right.
We're in a sort of a gussy-ing up.
Oh, yes.
And we, I mean, would it, does it matter?
Window sashes, I'm just trying to hit you, do not end up with better windows, but not good windows, because the panes are too square or whatever, because you're making all new ones. So you have the opportunity to really get it right, and if you have the winter openings surviving which someone just left, then you, that's good, it should lead you to the best solution. But I'm more more concerned about that doorway, because I think it's just a little too pants.
Is there one, Anthony, is there a picture of of how it looks now?
Yeah, the three A has it, Carrie.
That's why it's good to always, as we know, to have the what what is it, what's there now and what we wanted to be, right?
Anthony's very good giving us those drawings, but that's not what we're looking at here. A three A has the
old.
Olden, as is and yet. And that's where you'll see it. So his is much more handsome than what's there now. The question is, how did we get it?
Yeah, there it is.
So and your door is much bigger, I mean, you really went to town on a.
Oh, yeah, we did that, yeah. I mean, it's.
No one's questioning your ability to design a beautiful Greek revival door. The question is, you know, how much sort of, how much are we going this year? Looks like it.
So I don't think that would, the existing door is definitely not the existing door of the house.
However, we'll look at the signing and see how that relates to size of the door, because.
I think once he starts demo, he'll know how big the old door was.
We need to get out the profile here. It's just that, you know.
Could could we see that?
I think it should are on the simpler side of things.
Right, right, that's what I'm saying, this was like a you know, but when I say a common man, a common man's house, a fisherman's cart.
Even these wonderful little houses often have.
Can I see?
Oh.
Perhaps I could.
It's bigger than than picture.
Wow.
Much bigger than that picture, it's the same as the, almost the same thing, the window, right?
In comparison, Bethany, this looks like a, the the new door looks like it could be a seven or eight foot clearance door. Which we know is not common with that period.
Right.
Right?
But even what I was saying.
Too small, and something strange is going. Yeah.
See, it's not.
But a little bit of investigation.
It's not, it's it's in that one. So are you suggesting a site visit? Yeah, okay.
If I may.
Site visit.
Please.
Thank you.
Certainly.
Alright.
We'll probably, if not on the outside, we'll have to go with you.
I I have a little, I don't know, what is Zach, on the the way at the addition in the back, are you with that, the way it comes out over the, I mean, I know that's the original. You know, on the lower floor, but then see how the
I mean, the fenestration.
Yeah, is it, I guess it's further back, but I don't know, I just think it takes away from, I don't know.
Well, I mean, the ridge line drops a good foot or more.
Alright.
And sells back.
Yeah, it's alright. Alright. That just looks odd. But it is, but it's, if it's alright with you, I think it's gonna be alright.
No, I think it's a little odd.
You mean, the way the the roof at the very back
Yeah.
Comes down. Well, there's already a dormer there.
We have all that. All that's happened is he's just taken the cornice, it doesn't run through and which allows him a larger window, so the massing and roofline actually has not changed.
Right.
So.
Well, the roof.
I'm looking at.
Roof looks like it's gone up.
I'm looking at the above, but the.
The the above is the existing and the and the bottom is the.
No, I mean, no, I I mean, it's right, what we want it to be.
You're adding something on the left here, right?
But the bump out, is that what I recall?
On the on the lower left, what's showing is a bump out, but that's being built in the back, right?
Right, yeah, yeah, that's being built in the back.
Correct, and so is that is that component being reflected on the lower right hand drawing?
Uh, no, it it isn't, because that's the other, it's the other side, yeah.
It's the other side, yeah.
So, yeah, yeah.
I was trying to visualize that the other side, the other side.
Oh, yeah, can we see it maybe from the
Yeah.
The side of it, that would be the one.
But it also appears as if the roof has on the addition coming off the back is higher than it used to be.
It is, yes.
So you're raising the roof?
Raising it up, yes.
Well, Zach, is that alright with you?
Well, I was, we have the proposed one, I'm just saying it's still a foot below the ridge of the existing.
Right.
Right, so, yeah, we were careful to make sure that we we kept it lower than than the existing, I mean, to the lower than the main existing roof.
Just, okay. The existing, Dave.
And then the two windows right next to each other that are touching each other.
What's the top, the top is the current?
Bottom, yeah, no, in the on the new part on the back, there are these two windows that are smacked up.
Well, those are the same two windows, they haven't changed.
Oh, yeah.
No, there's a little bit of space.
They're full windows, yeah.
We have two big windows smacked up to we, to each other instead of two little tiny peekaboo windows.
I think this is not I think why that works, we'll have an inner why it works department. Is that they're very distinctly different from the six over sixes of the old part of that house, which is Greek revival wise. That pair of windows kind of reads like a twenties or thirties style. I mean, it's the doesn't matter about that, but the design is is different from the front of the house. And I think that works. Distinguished. Because it's just been built, it's not trying to be Greek revival, is that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
There there is some design period precedent for that, but that's here, well, I think it's the most important point is that, since it is a new section, it isn't evenly spaced, symmetrical, six over six sashes. As if that's the way it was, because it wasn't, I I think it, for me, kind of works. Just as the existing little squishy windows work. They're not trying to look old even.
Right, right. And then there's a new window downstairs.
In the front.
In the front of the, and that's in the old part of the house.
Yeah, yeah.
So is it okay to just stick a new window in?
Well, that is where you'd expect a window to be, I mean, it's it's that's where the symmetry of that comes in, I think it's in the right spot, and you've also cleaned up the upstairs window.
Yes.
Yeah, aligned it with the bottom.
So, yeah, right, there's a funny square window, and then there's another window, which I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we just clean that up.
So. I don't know, sort of going window by window.
There was something, okay, were you, were you with on the board, Zach, and it was something about the windows and oh, they they, but it's yeah, and swing, you know.
It's a casement.
Yeah, yeah, because it was a bedroom.
Yeah, so so one of those windows will will be a casement window with a simulated check rail, I mean, we 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 have to do that for egress. On the back as well.
Okay, anything else on this?
We're gonna table for site visit.
Yeah, okay. Is that in motion?
Sure, yes.
I'll second that, all in favor? Are we now finished with the new business?
No, one thirty three Jermaine.
One thirty three Jermaine. Anybody here for one thirty three Jermaine?
I am. Screen.
Relocation. The hell out.
Yeah, gonna relocate that.
Oh, yeah, this is relocation, where is it that my sheet here?
It's on the top of the page.
Next to each other.
Pages aren't numbered, you had all, you had all sorts of things written there. Yeah, here you go, up here, isn't it up here? Yeah, it's the, yeah.
Oh, yeah, okay. I hadn't noted that, so I I think. So. Yeah, to comply with zone, yeah. So. To make it.
Zone compliance, yeah, I know.
Yeah, right.
Why would you do this?
Because we are gonna, we are gonna raise the house and put, do the usual basement improvements, and so we are gonna need egress windows and things, and if we do this, then we'll be able to do that without variances.
No. Are are you gonna stay on the same foundation?
Well, obviously, the foundation, it's a shift of about a foot and a half, so, you know, obviously, a new foundation would have to be constructed, and we would submit a foundation plan. I know that Dave had asked for one, we just didn't want to do that until we knew whether the board was gonna be, was you know, gonna be in favor of moving the house slightly, and we'd get you that plan, so we're here to ask questions first.
So, is, we're just looking at the survey at the moment?
Yes, I think that is all that's there right now.
Yeah, can you just?
Really hasn't any other change to the house at all, other than shifting the entire house slightly, about a foot and a half to the west.
So it's on the, I'm looking at it from the right hand side, so on the east side, we're shifting from shifting it into the backyard more?
No, we're not, we're not changing the front yard setback, we're just shifting it, got a foot and a half to the west.
So you're moving it to the west.
And that's how I.
So into the driveway, that's north, sorry.
It's the driveway.
Okay, got it, you're right.
So, I would advise the board if they not approve this, I mean, moving a house to accommodate the convenience of a present or future owner, vis a vis the expandability or usability of the historical this, this, no. Excuse me, in addition, in addition.
No.
In addition. Moving it five feet.
Not five feet.
If you leave this foundation.
A half, right? You're moving it a foot and a half, you said?
As I said, if the if the board is 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 adverse to such an application, we'll withdraw it and move on, I just, we're here to find out whether that would be an acceptable notion for the board, I didn't want to submit have the client have drafted expensive foundation plans if the board wasn't. Excuse me?
Tell me when it's locked down, please.
I I'm sorry, what did, I didn't hear you.
He's good.
Okay.
Okay.
If you relocate this house, you now have to comply with the setback provisions.
Yes.
Which is a thirty five foot setback, right?
That's it, I guess technically you're correct, that would be correct.
Okay, so, until you decide that you want to do that, then you're gonna you're gonna change the whole layout of the plan. I think that you should, you should table this and you can you can come back. I'll take a second. The setback from the street, it's gotta be
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
New foundations, thirty.
Actually twenty feet in the historic. Twenty feet, so I think it would meet setbacks.
This seems frivolous. Moving a house. A few feet for what?
Well, it's for a foot and a half, I'm not, and you said the reason to do this is to create a basement?
Well, we are gonna be creating the same basement issue that everyone has, they want to dig out the basement and create habitable space down there, and we can't do that without with it being not compliant with zoning, we'd need variances for the egress windows and various egress issues. We figured we would ask the question if the board is not amenable to that, it doesn't say anything in the historic, in the context of the historic designation, it doesn't talk about the situs of the house on the property, but I understand the board's position, and if that's the board's position, well, we will table this and move on, but.
So historic houses have had basements dug out and basement ceiling heights increased, it's not beyond the pale.
Right.
But it's, they usually are not relocated.
Okay.
But that's another option to look at, but I think you should, I think you should clear, if you're gonna abandon that foundation, I think that changes the zoning laws. So so you should investigate that.
I, we will look into it and we'll get back to the board.
Thank you. Table? Can I get a second?
All, all.
Second.
All in favor?
Is it a table or is it a deny? Like, just to clarify, because I think I think the application is for relocation, and I think we're saying.
You think it's a denial?
Yeah.
There were just. I'd rather. Excuse me, I I would rather table the application till next month, rather than you have make a decision on it, if I'm able to come back or withdraw the application before then, I'd appreciate that opportunity.
Okay.
I think, okay, that's fine, I I think there's fair warning that there's some resistance to this, but the motions made and carried.
Which motion was that, I'm sorry.
The table.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, who's next to you, I totally.
Twelve Amity.
Twelve Amity.
Oh, boy.
Oh, geez.
Our old pal.
Oh, okay, now, yeah.
Ah, this is the beautiful barn. The house is down.
So who are we meeting this evening? Excuse me?
Good evening, my name's Denise Shern, I'm the attorney for the applicant, twelve Amity. For Miss Colleen Rankin, I'm here tonight with the architects, Salvador Pearson and Navias, who are standing next to me. They're going to handle the screen, I hope.
Yeah.
I'd like to hand up just anything that for you, but I think it would be helpful during that presentation.
Thank you, and this.
I think there's enough.
Yeah, I think it's enough. At least this was nicely put together, it's like this.
Oh, wait a minute, okay, this is not the barn, what are what are we doing?
Everybody, get what you get.
This is not the barn.
No, this is the house.
There's more.
It's gonna be the the front and the back, I mean, the barn and the, or this.
And windows and all sorts of stuff, and railing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Question for fresh board recollection, this matter has been before you with good times, you start a few modifications both to the house and you approved a refurbishment of the existing historical arrangement property. What happened is during the construction process or the reconstruction process, there was the rehabilitation process. There was a concern raised about whether or not the applicant was going beyond what reuse of materials, great materials, etc. So the building inspector issued that order and asked that we set up a meeting with Mr. Judy Kong and our our builder at the stage, that we take a look inside the barn and ensure that put the board procedures through rehabilitation project. It's my understanding from that meeting that the outcome was that we were in line with the system permit, but the building inspector that has reached two hundred and fifty percent of the management, and this left board now to fit into the place, and maybe there's a replacement of this decision.
Yes. Here from Mr. Stumer.
I thought you planned a roof like an asphalt roof that was not from time to time. No, sorry. There was.
Well, no, but did that, the other thing, I gave you the.
There was a roof. And then they did this, now taking for accessory apartment.
Yeah.
So the A, is that being withdrawn, being withdrawn, okay, so this is just like being a garage. Not the, the accessory apartment, accessory. There was an application of another window that would look out onto the neighbor's property, that's.
We don't have.
Well, we would just like this to be rehabilitated and placed in time. This is virtually approved. And then that would work in the passing of the building, the main state of the rehabilitation process.
Do you show us a picture of what the rehabilitation would reflect?
Right, so you need to see the design of what that is.
Absolutely. So can we, are you able to offer improvement?
Sure, so this window rendered we had done initially, the first meeting that we had. So the barn doors are going to be restored, and then we asked the doors that means inside, so it can be
Light.
Light.
Oh, lights in. Oh, air tight, okay.
And and so we were approved to use steel doors, black, black steel doors. We had white shorn, we had different colors, but the the black was.
There were originally steel doors on the structure?
Steel doors.
No, they weren't.
They were wood.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, they were wood, that's, the original doors were wood.
There's no existing, oh, the barn doors, they were exactly, they're gonna be restored, but then inside will be steel doors. Existing, there's no, there's no doors, it's just the barn doors.
To let the light in, is what your plan is, right? That's a, that's another door, correct?
Yes.
Or interior doors.
Yes.
Yes.
Interior door and an interior entrance there at that, at the barn, that thing, the barn entrance, the vault. Right, the front?
Yes.
Yeah, but it's two sets of doors.
Now, is there one on the top, two or? There is.
Is that a window?
Yeah, it's a window. Okay.
Okay. Oh, this is better.
Sorry, can't see it all.
No, we can see it.
Now, I can see, now I can see.
Okay.
What was the building inspectors' issue exactly?
So, the way I understand it, there was wood that had been stored in the structure from another structure, and it was being taken out, and the concern I think that was raised by a neighbor was maybe we were actually taking the wood out from the barn itself. And that that in fact was not the case.
I thought you also connected with heat, gas and.
I thought you also connected with heat, gas, and electric before having approval to do the accessory apartment.
It was to electrical, uh, only.
It was what?
Electrical.
To electrical? Electrical only?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Sorry, this is all new to me. I didn't know that, um.
And also, to, to be clear, the, since we scheduled, but I recall, the whole minutes, I recall a site visit because you were still in the let's make an apartment instead phase. Okay, and there were windows proposed for the upper story on this left side.
Correct, right. But that is being withdrawn.
But you're, you're talking in the light, I understand, I'm saying.
No, no, but the reason, the reason why you were called in this last time was because they were given a permit to do this construction, and it had a window in the rear of.
In the rear.
And so that's why the initial stop work order was issued because it isn't, uh, complying New York State code. So that's why the stop work order was issued. You were then brought in to go over with the building inspector, and then they, in the meantime, they came to us with a proposed, put, instead of the window in the back, to put the windows on the side.
And is it still going to be an apartment or whatever?
No, no, that's.
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 It's going to, what's the use? So I took, so we're clear, it's just gonna be a barn?
Just gonna be a barn.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
So my assumption is it gonna be a thermally broken barn, it's gonna now have heat.
You've got cooling and heat splits.
Okay.
It, it will have heat.
So if that's the case, then, you know, her, her training and, you know, insulation, finished materials, is that what the, the league inspector's in, uh, opposing to?
He didn't mention that to me, honestly, um.
Okay, so it's not a barn, it's a heated space now.
Well, you can.
Why is it heated? Why, when it?
Yeah, it's gonna be a rock.
Change quite a bit of the structure.
Why would you have to?
Why, why is this being heated?
On the inside.
Why, I'm asking, I don't know, are they?
Well, I'm just.
Why you wanna keep heat in the built? Not cold, you're right.
At your point, he.
Yes, yes.
So I have no issues just to get back to the design. So this, I think, is back.
Mm-hmm.
Right, we're just looking at the design.
It's bad.
Yeah, the way it should be. But why, I, my question is, why is it being heated?
It's just for comfort of use.
How, comfort of whom?
Well, you could use it as a studio, you could sit out there and read in the winter time, and you want to eat it.
Yes, huh, and there's electricity.
That's not what I'm thinking.
You don't have to hint, but.
Yeah.
Okay.
To be honest.
So, so, okay.
Looks much better. Yeah, looks good, looks better, yeah. You have feeling glass, modern inset, historic closure, greatness, but that issue of ADU, okay, you can say I'm withdrawing my permit for an ADU, but I'm still building an ADU.
No, well, she's not building.
I know, but then I say, okay, prove that to me. Are you heating it? Yes, okay. Is there water out there? Oh. Okay, um, electric?
Our, our builders on the.
Yeah, electric. And then, and then you're.
Those barns have light poles.
Yeah, so laterals find electricity on a barn to be. Right.
A violation of the code, that's.
I agree. Right, right, right.
And I would also say that my garage, my ranch house, has a heating unit upstairs so my car doesn't freeze. This is not a hesitation.
Just un-insulated.
Un-insulated.
Right.
So then, I don't insulate it.
Un-insulated.
I don't, I, I'm not an expert, but I would say there's no.
So I'm, I'm actually an expert on this part.
Good, so why is this a violation?
If you're, if you're insulating it, they're not. They're saying they're not, and they're heating it, but with just an electric.
Mini splits.
Through the walls, mini split? Where is that mini split living?
It'll be on the site.
So chill up in the elevation.
In the barn.
No, it's not showing on the, uh, it's showing on the plan.
You said on the inside or the outside?
Inside.
Inside?
Okay, so, all right, so now we get into how historic is this structure? This does come into your play, like, it goes a little further than just what is looked on the outside. It's the actual structure. So we just want to make sure we're not, that's what the neighbor was probably worried about.
It's very historic.
You're not holding timbers that are actually part of the historic structure. So what was, did team, did the building inspector decide that that was the case?
It wasn't the case. It was not the case.
It was not the case. I don't know, I went out, I inspected all that.
Okay, good.
So there was no timber problem, there was no cloud problem. He actually then brought new material to the site, new, old, and new.
Old and new.
Timber around the site.
Which is fine.
Right, to use in the work, but then everything came to the test.
Okay, so then I thought, so then what now? Are we just trying to?
So we're trying to lift the stop work order, which is because since then, we haven't been able to do any work on the barn, and we'd like to finish the refurbishment of the barn.
Did you discuss that with Bill once, technically?
I know it, I don't have contact with Tim, really. I'm just looking at the design as proposed and the use, which has changed from the accessory model, and aesthetically, I find it's.
This is gonna be, what are we, this is like, it says rec rooms.
It shows an interior staircase.
You know, you get up, you have lawn.
Okay.
I got you.
I guess it doesn't matter what it's.
Okay, so.
I suggest an I with the use.
There's gonna be a fireplace in there, um, Zach, a gas fireplace.
What?
Am I reading, I'm reading the wrong street, I'm reading the wrong thing?
No.
Okay.
No.
Um, guys, Eric Hagerman here. Excuse me for a second.
Amity Street.
It's a topic at one west side, gas fireplace.
Yeah.
That's the main house. That's on the main house.
Oh, that's the house.
There's two developers.
Why, why is this so confusing? Why is this so chaotic?
Yeah, we're here for a two-part application. The first part of the application is for the barn.
Right.
That explains that we got a stop work order. The building inspector felt very strongly that we come back to, that I tell you this story, and that you hear directly from staff about his observation of the site, so that he feels comfortable with the stop work order, that we write back and convince and have to answer a few other.
Okay, this is just.
Just nothing in this pack about the barn.
There's nothing in this pack about the barn.
Yeah, it's confusing.
Nothing to hear about the barn.
Hmm?
There's two sets of plans, one's for the house, one's for the barn.
Okay, I did not get one for the barn.
Oh, you did. No, this is the barn.
I think it's a barn.
Here's the barn.
Here's the barn. Oh. I didn't get the house.
We didn't get that.
Okay, that's why. Then we had the house.
We just got the barn.
Okay.
Confused people.
No, I understand, yeah.
Like, we're, we're looking.
This is just chaotic.
Okay. So we're breaking it into two pieces, we're talking about the barn, no other comments on the barn, right?
Okay.
Question, question, we're talking about what, what utility is gonna be on the barn? There's a picture of a hose, you're gonna have water at the barn. You're gonna have water at the barn, yes?
It's existing.
Existing service outside of the barn.
Okay, and you're gonna have electric.
And what is this electric connection gonna look like? Where, and where is it gonna be?
It's gonna show you, I think there's a picture.
Yeah, there's the exterior goose neck lamps.
Well, I don't know, uh, how Zach feels about those lamps.
I can see.
Yeah, so let's give this to Zach.
There you go.
He can see it right up here.
Alright.
I see the cut there, I don't see it on the building.
Where does it go?
That side door.
What's on the side door?
No, it's up top.
It's up top.
Oh, we up there?
Wait, there's, there appear to be two.
Oh, and on the side door, I see it in profile off to the left.
There's three.
Oh, there.
Oh, there's three.
There's three.
There it is.
It's in the same units that we showed last time.
Correct.
Me either.
No.
I was worried about you.
No.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Okay.
It's three.
Mm-hmm, I think it's fine.
Okay, so I, I'd like to make this two separate motions, if you guys don't mind, um.
There, I'd like to want to be heard.
Hmm?
Other people want to be heard on this one.
Okay.
If you don't mind.
No, none at all.
Sorry, if you don't mind, if that's, thank you. Uh, Catherine Bowers Craig from Crete, the PC, um, representing the neighbor. Can I share my screen real quick? Hello.
Eric. Mr. Hager.
Your laptop. Oh, I just. I'm sorry.
Um, now that we're all quiet, when she's finished presenting, I'd just like to sum everybody up on like the exterior of the barn, wh- what we have on site, material wise, structurally, what we had to do to get to where we are, and then let them take from there.
So I'm cutting technical difficulties, I'm not gonna hold up the board, but what I wanted to show is what is existing at the purpose now, which is not what is submitted on these materials. This barn is not standing there, even though the plans say existing structure dated three, five, twenty-five, it's down to studs, it's down to blue wrapping, this is no longer there.
With a.
I'm sure, do all the board members understand that?
No.
No.
Thank you. I'm very pleased to hear that you understand that, Mr. Studeroff, that you're at the site, um, because I have a lot of questions as far as materials. When you look through these plans, they reference specifications saying that the owner is going to take precaution in demolition, it's already been demolition, that's very misleading for these plans to say, I'm gonna take care in the demolition. We are gonna try to preserve the materials. If you've already demolished it, tell us what you have, tell us what's there, tell us what is new, where you're sourcing them from, standpoints, be clear about what you are presenting this to the board and for the approvals.
Excuse me, did you just say that it has been demolished?
I would, I would love to show a picture. Do you have? I have it on my phone, I can pass it around. Um, we, we know it was.
This is insane.
Supposed to be, ever.
Wait, I mean, does the, sorry, just, just to clarify your question, is the, is the current state picture that you're showing, that you had shown as current state, the actual current state?
No.
No, that was how it was.
We, we got a stop work order in the middle of, so we don't.
And is this all new wood?
That's a great question. It should be.
It looks like brand new.
Yeah.
That information should be provided.
This is outrageous. I'm sorry.
No, it, it, it definitely, uh, I know it was less than you thought, I saw.
But all this exterior wood, they're saying refurbish the doors. Are the doors there? Mr. Studeroff, did you see the wood that was preserved, that there was refurbishment? Okay.
Yes, all of the, all of the siding has been gently removed and is still on site. The doors are still intact and still on site, and we kept in really aware of like the process of how we would have to take care of this. The building had no sheathing on it, so when you remove the siding, structurally, you put new sheathing on, you put new weather wrap on. We saved all of the siding from the east, which was a.
Eric, not on a, on a historic structure, you don't have that.
Yes.
No, and what, what about sheathing?
Well, that was.
You don't have to have sheathing.
Excuse me?
You don't have to have sheathing.
Well, typically you'd have skip sheathing or something, but.
Not on a historic barn that doesn't have sheathing.
This is, this is a change of views.
The, the, the east side and the back side of the house facing the neighbors was already re-sided with, um, almost identical material to what was on the front that was completely failing, and we saved every piece of salvageable siding. And we fixed the rafter tails, which have already been replaced. The roof was reframed, the whole east wall was reframed, the back wall, there was no framing, and, um, all of the material's still there and planned to go back up over new weatherproofing.
Did you get permission to do this reframing? Why couldn't you have simply taken the framing that was there and made it stronger? You could have sistered in some, uh, wood or whatever. Well, who told you you could do this?
We sistered in next to existing framing on the west side and on the front side of the building. The back side, there was no existing framing on the first floor to reuse. Both gable ends on the second floor are existing framing, Zach saw them. Um, and we, we kept, I kept, personally, I kept in with pictures and calls daily to, to keep him on track with this, since we anticipated that there would be.
He alerted us that there's, there should be a stop work.
Yeah.
Well, there, there was.
No, this is not now.
There is.
Could I, could I? Some back history. But we're, aren't we being, hold on, aren't we being asked to lift the stop work?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, so then I'm.
Well, you have.
Forget it.
It wasn't just.
If I may, if I may, if I may, you're being asked to actually issue and consider a certificate of appropriateness. You don't have the authority to lift a stop work order, just so everybody's clear.
Okay.
I think the, the, the reason for stop work order is because of the miscommunication between the zoning, a necessary zoning change and what was permitted. The, the homeowner ex- thought that it, she was able to put an ADU in here based on the approval and then a building permit being issued and didn't realize that CBA was necessary.
Absolutely.
Okay, let, let, let's, your, your team has been presenting for a while, let's let the, let's people some comment for a second, and, and so we can get the whole picture.
Yeah.
So if you, you can please continue.
So, uh, Frankie, he was ninety-six Madison Street in Sag Harbor. We abut the barn. The barn is six inches from our property. So, Mr. Hagerman, I appreciate that you're new.
He has to direct your comments to the board, I'm sorry.
Well, no, I, I appreciate that Mr. Hagerman is new to the issue, but there is six hundred and sixty-seven pages of documents that go back to nineteen ninety-nine, or I'm sorry, two thousand and nineteen about this property, right? Uh, Ms. Dearman, you've been very gracious and very careful about in your emails. I want to make sure that all the barn wood on the exterior of the property is preserved in your emails.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Tian did not go back through the six hundred and sixty-seven pages because they were put up in, uh, in reserve. So there is a lot of history on this, all right? Mr. Studeroff, you have been noted in emails to note that this property, all right, this barn is one of the most historic ones that we have here in Sag Harbor in an email, all right? So.
Who emailed me that?
No, you emailed, and it's gone back and forth and everything. So I, I'm happy to show everyone the six hundred and sixty-seven pages of emails.
I don't think we have the time for six hundred and sixty-seven emails, but I'm only questioning you, sir. You're saying that in an email that I wrote, I referred, wait a minute, that I referred to this as the most historic, what?
What I am telling you is.
No, I want you to repeat what you said.
I, if you would, if you would let me finish, then I will tell you, because as I said, this has been six years of headache for us, all right? And so what I am going to tell you is that Mr. Betts, who owned the property prior to the current owner, told, uh, would, told us, and I was thereby, when I wrote an approval, I said, yes, we're very happy to have this property restored, have the barn restored, because we don't want it to fall down. As a former, his, as a former member of the Sag Harbor Hist- board member of the Sag Harbor Historic Society, I want to, and having constructed and restored, not renovated, restored, two old properties here in Sag Harbor, one on Madison Street and one on Howard Street, I am absolutely in favor of this and was worried. In May of two thousand and four, or two thousand and twenty-four, I wrote the building inspector and said, here are all the photos, here's everything, this barn is going to fall down. Why was the one going to fall down? Because the vets asked us to cut the tree that supported the barn, that was on our property, and it was an old historic tree.
Right.
We were so ret- reticent to do it, but we did it with the understanding that they would put in the proper supports, and I wrote Mr. Tian in two thousand and twenty-four in an email saying, the only thing we're just wanting to do is let the barn fall down so that they can come in and build their little gym that they want to build. All right, the reason that there was a stop work order is because unfortunately, Mr. Tian was not aware of the New York State codes that say you cannot have a window that was approved, you cannot have a window overlooking a property three feet away from the property line. This barn sits six inches, and the architect should have known that, but they failed. All right, so what I am saying to you is I've done this over and over and over again. Ms. Dearman, it's been six years. I am asking for an end to this nonsense. They have been actors in bad faith, and all they need to do, and where this town needs to do, is to support historic architecture. And that does not mean steel doors. What it means is to restore a barn, which had no siding, had no, nothing. which had no siding, had no, nothing else, had no steel doors, restore a barn to what it was. If I go back to the there was a conversation, a sidebar conversation, and you guys can look at it, but I videotaped it. And folks said, this is a barn, keep it a barn. A barn does not have glass siding and windows in the second floor.
Right.
Direct quote, and I'll leave it to you all to figure out who that direct quote was from. But after six years, I'm tired.
Before you, before you finish, I didn't ask you to identify yourself.
Frank Hageman, ninety-six.
I, I did, are you an architect?
No, I'm a, I, I pride myself to be a historian.
Okay.
For old architectural buildings.
Okay, fine, well, thank you. For some reason, I thought you were also an architect. Um, did you complete your comments? Okay.
It's there.
I have one comment. Do we know the year of this building?
No.
It's, no, let me, this is what I remember and what I know.
I can see with the nomination.
There's gotta be, there was an approval.
Yeah, and the whole.
How many years ago was it all done? I mean, how, what was the year?
I believe it was twenty nineteen, right?
Twenty nineteen, okay.
It was twenty nineteen.
I remember.
Yes, alright, so that was done. Then, then the architects came back to make it the apartment.
Is that, was everybody else here?
That was recently.
And, but we didn't move on that, no, I don't think, I think because we had to.
That's what I would have.
Yeah, okay. So.
But in the meantime, I believe you withdrew that.
Yes, yes.
I'm not involved.
Alright, did they, but did they, they didn't withdraw what we approved to begin with, did they?
They were withdrawing the new design work that would convert to an apartment use. And they then withdrew it. That's why they had the windows.
Alright.
And when you saw that, you're like, what's with the windows?
So in that case, do we?
And they withdrawn that.
We do have an, a, we have an approved plan.
Yeah.
And so that, to me, we need to look at the approved plan and see if they followed it.
Correct.
Were you shown that, Eric?
Yeah, of course.
Eric, yes.
Yeah, and also back in two thousand and nineteen, I was also involved in this barn. Um, unfortunately, so that's when I moved all this old lumber over because we were gonna straighten and just fix in place, no foundation, we're gonna kind of do a, you know, a, a old fashioned repair to this thing, and I brought the old lumber from another job down the road. And it's been in the barn since, but unfortunately, the homeowner got sick, passed away and moved on. But that's where the, that's when the asphalt roof was approved. And it actually, those notes existed on the most, the, the latest ARB approved set of drawings, so it does say wood shingles and asphalt shingles, and I mistakenly put asphalt on the roof and Tin called and we, we changed it to wood the next morning, like that fast. And um, just to reply kindly to the neighbor Frank's comments, I think that uh, the window was an oversight and uh, being neighborly, the uh, Claudine, the homeowner, was happy to forego the window. The whole ADU thing was uh, an oversight, I think in a lot of people's case, and has also been rescinded as an application. Now, in everybody's favor with weather and blue skin showing for the whole summer, I think that the goal here is to put this thing back together using the existing siding that we have, rebuilding doors and skinning them with the existing doors that we have, so that the thing looks as best as, as old as it could. Um, the roof has been reframed, Zach can speak for that. The east wall was already reframed, he, he can speak to that. There's a lot of old lumber in the house, he can speak to that, and of course, there's a new foundation underneath us now. Um, going forward, I think, who wants to speak next?
Well, I, I, I'm gonna make this comment. Sag Harbor's being overrun with a lot of honest mistakes. And it seems to me that there were other ways that the, you could have used an interior methods to make this uh tight in terms of weather tight. You didn't have to take out off the outside, you could have done it from the inside. And so um, I think you were pretty aggressive in what you've done. Um, I don't know if anybody else, before we get to third, second and third places, representatives, anybody on the board wanna render their opinion here?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm a little bit confused, I think like you are, as to what the ultimate usage of this is, right, because.
It could be an accessory structure, there's no design use for it, it's like, you know, having my shed in the backyard, like I don't have a use for that other than storage stuff.
No, understood. Where I'm getting confused then, if that's the case, is what's the heat for and what's the uh, staircase for and all of those other things and the, and the metal, metal glass, at the metal and the glass windows and so on. Because what I thought I heard Salvador say was, was to make it airtight, and so to the extent that it's airtight, then it's the intended use maybe more than just a barn. And so that's what I'm trying to really understand what it's for.
First of all, the board can't assume that something.
No, that's true.
Start from a position of, they're gonna, they're asking accessory structure. Um, I've sat down with her, I've had conversations with her, she withdrew her ADU application, which did get a building permit. Um, unfortunately, it mistakenly, it shouldn't have gotten one, it needed a variance.
I didn't think it did.
So I've explained that to her.
Does that even happen?
No. A former building inspector approved it.
So, no, no.
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 No, the board approved, they came, they came originally in two thousand and nineteen, then they came back approved the window in the back, they were issued a building permit.
For that.
The, for, for that.
Just for the window.
Then they came, then the building, um, inspector put a stop work order order on it, then they came and they were doing something for the ADU, right?
Yes.
Right.
And then that's when we said about the seventy percent. And so now, here we are.
Okay.
So she knows she can't have an ADU, or if she did, she'd have to go to the zoning board, and that's not something she's interested in, she just wants to use it as a regular accessory structure. And I mean, I guess I have to ask her about the heat, all I can say is that it's for comfort.
Well, even if, well, I think it's perfectly all right, it doesn't matter what our opinion is about that or not really, but it is okay to, to heat your garage if you're gonna be up there working or doing whatever.
Right.
We don't automatically have to think they're gonna move it.
And that's fire escape.
But, but, but the, the method, the means and methods that they use to do the work they did.
Right.
They threw each other means and methods.
Yes.
And accomplished the same thing.
Right.
Okay.
I don't, I don't see any pictures here of a staircase.
It's, it's on the plane. Something's falling wrong when you're going.
I think, so I actually recommend this to Zach who are on site, because you know, it, it's a little bit alarming when you go into a structure that is ridden with rot, ridden with holes in the walls, the back wall is non-existent, there were sheet tin covering the side. There was an old window back there that had been knocked out for years, right? And you have corner posts that are structural and missing, like there's, there's I think that it should almost be a requirement for this, instead of design drawings, that you guys have like an engineer's report to say like how much of the siding is truthfully salvageable? Because in my opinion, fifty percent was in good shape, and there are probably thirty percent was replaced and the rest of it was non-existent. Um.
Yeah, I'm gonna interrupt you. Are you an architect, by the way?
No, builder.
Builder, okay.
You're the architect.
But lover of all old things and born and raised in Sag Harbor.
Alright, alright, please, no, let me just finish. This is a historic structure.
Mm-hmm.
New York State, the federal government has guidelines on how to address historic structures. We shouldn't have to tell you how to do this, but they're very clear, windows and every detail on how to do it. This was a, this was an activity that you undertook out of convenience, not out of respect for the historic regulations. You put us in a situation where, where we are going to have to, you're asking us to make it a, an exception to how federal law says something should be done. Okay, so, so let's not see that you're unreal, unrealistic or any of that stuff. There are, even rotten structures. I remember when I was first on this board, someone tried to de- destroy an old historic candy house. Remember Mr. Studenoff, he showed up here with a piece of rotten lumber and wanted to destroy it? He hooked it to tractors. They ended up having to re- rebuild the house because they tried to pull it with chains so it's destroyed. So we've seen this before in Sag Harbor, but this is federal law. You're not asking us to be nice guys, you're asking us to, to, to try to amend the law, which power we don't have. So, what I'd like to do is table this. I'd like you to go home and read the federal rules and regulations and then come back with a proposal of how you're gonna proceed to meet those regulations with the completion of this project. That's my motion.
We've, we've read those and working with Tin side by side and meeting with him on site and George.
Tim is not, Tim is not an expert on, on, on historic restoration.
But he's.
Please.
I restore historic buildings throughout New Jersey and some now on Long Island.
Okay.
Depending on what year that building is determined. And when it determines its significance, either culturally or structurally or both, I think it's both on this one. You then have to replace, if something is de- determined that it needs to be replaced, have to be replaced in kind. So let's say the thing is eighteen ten, let's say it's eighteen twenty. You have to go find floor timbers from eighteen ten or eighteen twenty, and you have to install them the same way they were installed in eighteen ten or eighteen twenty. So long. So we can unfortunately, if we don't have an exact date, then we start to say, oh, okay. Once it was designed as an ADU, there's absolutely no reason to be using conventional lumber. You don't have to bring it up to floor code, weight ratios, swaying, deflection, any of that, fire code, nothing. So that's another reason why it had to be restored perfectly in kind. So this one is, it's not just a quick, oh, sorry about it. You've been here before. I've been here now two months, almost three, you've been here three times. You've been told, you've kept going, you now have reframed it. I have more problems reframing it than saving half the siding, because I can go find the exact site, I can go out to Pennsylvania and get the same corner, frame it over. So there, I don't agree with Mr. Hagman saying he's doing it how he's supposed to be doing it, and that he spoke to our building inspector. I think our building inspector may have misspoke. So.
Okay.
That brings us up to a proposal that your board be given more than elevation drawings. It would represent the design of what the desired end product is. But rather to request of applicants for all purposes to present to you what we could call a preservation plan. And in that plan, I think this is, I don't want to digress, it's five after eight, but I think this is the perfect example of a building, a very simple building. You'd ask yourself, how far can you go wrong with this? If, if you want to end up with the same thing, the same extreme, but the point is there was no plan, so to speak, presented because there is no plan requested. And in a case like this, as simple as it is, if the applicant had been required to say, okay, well, the northeast corner post is rotted beyond oblivion, more than fifty percent, whatever, they're making the case. And therefore, we're gonna replace it with X, not just a drawing of the exterior, but rather a plan. You would have the opportunity to say, no, wait a minute. We are requiring that you replicate that corner post to be six inches square sawn of oak, whatever. But that's, that opportunity doesn't alive.
And like.
Whatever. And in this case, this is a barn that probably dates from the eighteen nineties, so let's not get our knickers out in, in a twist. But I'm just saying, it serves as a great example. So, so here's the case in point, so I think that's not gonna apply here because we don't have that on the books. But it illustrates why, and it's, it's the burden of the applicant to investigate and present what they're gonna do, and then you can say, we like that, we approve of that, but we think you should X, Y and Z. In all fairness to. So here you are. In all fairness to Zach, we have had this conversation.
Mm-hmm.
And, and uh, I agree with him a hundred percent. And the, the working group was supposed to, was supposed to introduce that. Next time. But, but, so we'll stand, we'll stand on the federal standard. Yes. Because that pre-exists, right? That pre-exist. It's gonna govern. So, so I'm just, just to be clear, uh, the federal standard predated this conversation, it was done in I think in sixty-four, sixty-six.
I'll send the board the original decision of this board, because it does have, it does have the architect's notes on exactly what boards they'll preserve and what they'll do, and it has all of that in the decision of this board's initiative of approval.
Thank you.
Fabulous.
Yes.
So now, can I get a?
Thank you.
Do, do we want to table or do we want to deny? What do you guys want to do? What's the sense of the board?
Well, I think.
Well, they, we.
This is just.
They can't continue to work.
So the stop order stays in place.
Right.
And, and um,
They, they.
We, we suggest that you come back to us and you, you've heard the criteria that we need. And we suggest that you come back to us with that criteria fulfilled.
And I'd like to see plans, I want to know what this heating thing is gonna look like. And if you're putting electricity in, first of all, I'd like to ask if this building ever had electricity in its life. And if it didn't, why does it have to have it now? And.
Well.
Why does it have to have lighting outside? Did it ever have lighting outside before?
We don't know, but I, I think it's for safety.
No, we don't, hey, we, it's okay, this is pre-existing, non-conforming. If it never had light, then it never had light.
Yeah.
And it never had heat.
You're right, you're right, Judith, but I mean, we can't ask people now to walk out in their house with a lantern.
Uh, come on, flashlight, everybody has a flashlight on their phone.
Yeah, but I think it's.
Anyway, that I would like to see, because I think um, some electric units or, I mean, heating units, I hope they aren't gonna be, you know, ugly.
We'll get back to all that.
My biggest, my bigger concern honestly is, is just that while the exterior may look the same, I, I just don't, my sense just from this conversation is that the interior is not intended to be a barn. It's intended to be more than a barn, therefore, are we effectively recreating an interior structure that is different than the actual structure?
Well, uh, let me just, let me just interject here, change of use is not against historic perspectives, right? So we, we changed Penn Station now, you know, and then Moynihan Building and those sort of things. So change of use is not an issue here that we should be addressing.
We really have to.
I hear you on that, I hear you on that.
To focus on the outside.
Okay.
Mm-hmm, and that it's, that we don't lose this building.
But the interior is staying the same, it's the same before.
Yeah, that is, okay, so federal guidelines, historic structure, it's not just the outside.
I didn't see that.
No, no, I'm just saying, I'm just trying to clear this up, it's actually all of this.
And that's where I was getting.
Here's what happens.
Too, which is the reframing on the inside that we talked about.
Yeah.
Beautiful houses in Sag Harbor are no longer historically significant or no longer historically contributing because when they've been renovated, too much. So you've already renovated this now, too much. You are in like very gray zone.
The building had, if you've been in there before this work had started, a large percentage of the interior framing had been repaired and replaced prior. Right, Eric? Like there was.
I'm looking at a lot of new studs for joists and blue skin.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying, I mean, I can't document that to begin with.
Right.
Then this process would be so much easier, because there wouldn't be a how much was there or whatever. So I think that's.
So.
And, and that's more my lack of understanding, less about the change of use, but rather about how this is.
The condition.
Right.
Right, and, 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 and the need for the work, the scope of work that we, that we should
Do you think?
That you were trying to address, right, and that we should, and we will herefore uh, ask for that, for, for modifications of historic structures.
Should we, should we all, should we have a site visit again?
I think we should, if possible, then we should have a site visit.
If we did it at the very beginning, right, we must have, yeah.
We did.
There was a tree growing in the window, there was a tree growing in the window and the window looked. There was a tree growing in the window and the window looked right on this man's property.
Might I suggest just one thing? There are six hundred and sixty-seven pages of documentation. I do not wanna burden this board because I know exactly. But for any project, for a barn to have that many pages of documentation, it is absolutely informative. And will give you great recollection and I wish that the architects missed the time because I know they didn't. To actually read through where the board was going originally to save an old barn.
Okay, I I can't, I can't commit to six hundred and sixty-five.
But he's right.
Remember, we we are volunteers here.
That was.
So so I think we've discussed this enough. Okay, add infinitum. So I'm gonna make a motion. That we table this and we let you guys go back and 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 and. And take on the responsibility.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Totally honest.
We want you to come back with something that gives us the existing. I don't wanna site visit now. I want you to give us the existing condition of the building as it is. A plan for improvement that that's not destroy the exterior skin or 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 the, okay? Other than necessary repairs, that's part of your condition report. Okay, and 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 how you plan to finish this building. And that it conforms to federal law.
So is this, I mean, it sounds like something an historian would put together. Yeah, anyone like that. Okay.
Well, I would, I would get an independent.
Yeah, but someone like that, someone.
And someone that's trying to.
There's plenty on the website. I'm sorry, Dave.
Yeah, try to date it and, you know, exact right, it's not quite as old as everybody might think it is, but there's.
I think it's just, it shows up on the sandbar between nineteen oh nine and nineteen twenty-one. And it was on the.
Oh, I think it was built before.
Historic is fifty years plus.
Yeah, I agree.
Right, so we just can't, you know, oh, it's new historic.
Interesting, nineteen thirteen barn and I know exactly what I had to do. You guys did not do it. So you gotta, you gotta learn, you have to figure out what you're supposed to do with that building.
Okay, we, we, the, the Secretary of Interior Guidelines for Rehabilitation, those are the ones, right? They they should allow for some change, yeah.
Yes.
Restoration, restoration.
Right.
All right, now, um I understand that we're going to uh table the barn. Are we going to go move forward here with the the main house?
I think in all, I think in deference to all these people who've been waiting through this.
Table everything.
Lavorious that we table everything and and we bring it back again.
Good.
Okay.
I'll make that motion, table.
Seconds.
Well, that may be strange.
I just wanted to point out, we just, I've been sat here for two hours waiting to present to you, so um. Just so the board knows, it's it's a little disappointing not to get to make your whole presentation.
I'm sorry, but you have been back here, your client has been back here many times. We've had many discussions with them. We've delayed other people many hours. So I I understand what you're saying. In fact, I've just subscribed to your newsletter today. So, uh but I'm saying to you that I think in deference to these other people. That we move on today, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
I move to table, well, that may be strange.
I think you seconded already.
Oh, yeah, I thought we already, I thought we already did that.
We didn't do it. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Who's here next? I have lost my place. Are we up for discussion items now?
No.
Oh, my goodness.
Eighty-three Main Street. We're here.
It raises enough to step forward.
Hello.
Hi, I I remembered that there was not a lot of information in your folder, right?
Pictures.
Just pictures.
Replacement of windows, light and sound. At Eor eighty-four Main Street, your name, sir?
I'm Morgan Knight, I'm the building supervisor and agent for the landlord of eighty-three Main Street, also Eor LLC. Does everyone have these photos?
No, I didn't see those in the package.
Well, we saw them in the folder.
You have mine.
Your what?
No, I didn't, no.
It wasn't that in the folder, but okay.
Yeah. Thank you.
You got enough, everybody?
Yeah, I think your name, hold on.
I think they're the same pictures.
Oh, yeah, 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 no, I I did read this, I'm sorry, Dave.
Okay, but I believe.
It was the last one.
Yep, there's all.
I found those three, and this was the last.
This was, yes, okay. And this was about the front windows and and the trans, and the transom. Well, the transom, they had the, the air conditioner sticking through when we were changing.
This is that.
Yeah.
This doesn't.
There's a second story, Main Street.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, this is on right. Oh, this isn't the right one.
It's on Washington, but it has a Main Street address.
Okay.
Their building is known.
But even a. Yeah, well, yeah, so this is the.
No, it's on the same property. It's.
That looks.
The next lot over is.
So he's writing, Zach is sending this, writing it to everybody.
New stores, identified. Look at the tax map, it says eighty-three Main Street.
Yeah.
So you guys.
I mean, there's two or three buildings, but they're. Former building, and this.
It's interesting.
And then there's a big block.
Wait, if you go up the uh. Staircase.
That.
One apartment is over Main Street, oh, kind of other than the water.
The habitat, maybe there's.
That's all the area.
Okay, let's move on.
Oh.
Well, their request is to replace the uh the storefront windows as is, the rotted. And we just were issued a building permit for interior renovation yesterday, so the timing would be uh good.
So you're gonna use the same materials?
Talking about the uh display windows.
Yes.
From the stores. So the storefront windows are gonna be replaced.
Not the top windows, just the.
Not the front, I mean, no, it's the window store.
Okay, just this.
Okay, and are you keeping the little transom windows above?
Yes.
Those little.
You're replacing them exactly identically?
Exactly.
What material? What's the material?
In kind, would it have to be wooden?
I want.
Well, I recommend, oh.
Oh, what did?
No, go ahead.
What did you write?
I recommended that they not be replaced. But I didn't, I didn't see the application, I just saw windows for that. So I thought the upstairs sashes is glued, smashed there. I think all of those windows upstairs and down are original. I'm not sure about the. The store windows, but the transom. It's just that it doesn't really matter whether it's a storefront or a house, right? These are the windows.
Right.
Um and so traditionally, if the windows appear to be original, we don't just replace them. Because we want to, so here again.
Well, it's not a one, it's the surveilling.
Okay, you used the word rot, okay, there's wet rot and there's dry rot. And I'm gonna suggest that these windows are suffering from you. They may be weathered, okay? Um, I mean. People use that word rot the way they use the word ballast incorrectly, they don't know the definition. I'm not accusing them of taking that up, I'm just saying the actual condition of those windows. Which should be demonstrated to the point where they need to be replaced rather than being repaired. Because they're original of the building, that's in the nature of the structure being listed as a contributing historic building. So we don't just replace the windows because. I mean, one, good evidence of rot, I think there were nine. So I'm just saying, these conditions have to be accurate, they can't be generalities. And so if I can have the opportunity to be, no, it's there.
Okay.
I'm going here, so I'll show you. Okay.
Yes.
That's exactly what I was gonna recommend.
So I did this for the side.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you didn't get to go in.
No.
You can step away.
From the outside, it's the outside.
So I am going to make a motion.
Did you read this?
I I'm gonna make a motion that we ask Mr. Studenoff to uh visit the applicant. To make an appointment for an inspection.
Eric can set it up for us.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
We got three seconds.
One, two, three, we know. Three seconds.
All right, all, all's aye.
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 Okay, now we get to the discussion. Nine Forest Street, he's, who's here for Nine Forest Street? Uh, hey, Carrie, I'm sorry. Do you have a copy of this or am I holding your copy?
No, I don't.
Okay.
Yeah, but that's.
Oh. Everyone here.
Okay, does everyone have a copy of this?
Hello, and I, yes, indeed.
Those are consent agendas.
Oh, thank you so much.
Okay.
So, hi, please reintroduce yourself, I was chatting, I'm sorry.
I'm Lyndon Wade, I'm uh one of the members of Ora Street LLC. I'm just here to discuss a kind of very early on project. Um, got a few pictures, photographs of the existing building. Essentially, hit knives and scars, painting and. A little bit premature, but there was blood pretty much the day we completed on the same property. We don't want to hemorrhage, cause. The original plan, and you use it for, sounds like. We also get some leased buildings. And by the end of the time. Basically, uh however long the plan is present, so we're. Think of. Plus of the demo. And ultimately, we would be looking to to rebuild a new property.
Is this a contributing home?
No.
It's not a historic.
Looks like it is.
No.
Well, it's one of those interesting nineteen forties simulated saw box. A small one. Kind of.
Is the house?
Uh, no.
Yeah, here, it is a blue door, yeah, it's the same one. Yeah, that's why I was just looking through to the rest of it.
You want some of these?
Oh, wow.
That's what they wanted.
And so what are we looking at here?
When you get a chance, let me see that, when you're done.
You think so?
So this would be a material expansion of the property from what it is today?
Uh, yeah, currently the property is um about thirteen hundred square foot living space for the unfinished.
Come around, Dave.
We'll keep standing.
Okay, so, so, sorry, guys, did you hear that?
No.
So the current house is thirteen hundred square feet and the desire is to be able to take that to forty-five hundred square feet. So just a, just a significant expansion. I just, I just wanna make sure, because there's a lot of conversation.
Thank you.
So I just, I, that's, that was part of the reason I asked.
So so it's not because, it's not because of the flood.
Well, I, I don't.
It was just bad timing. Some days, the uh form was high, so more developed than plans.
Okay, um so it would be, your your intent would be to completely demolish and restart?
Correct. Regardless of whether the.
Right, oh, I see, I see.
Well, I said, if it develops, a much love of life or comprehensive.
Yeah, like a comeback.
Anyway, if it hasn't happened, I probably wouldn't be, you know, pretty much. But because of the flood. And using, basically, and still do. And I don't want it to just sit there, you know, with power and everything I've connected and just leaving it, so.
So this is not in the historic.
Yes, and as far as I know, that is not.
Not, no. And so I think, uh speaking out of turn, because that's what you should deal with, but. I think the witness, the same in context as everything, right? And so I think the scale, size, all of us. Want to be compatible, may have, so it's really, will this work in, or not, with that's the thing, consideration.
Yeah, that's, that's, for me, that's the piece that I don't, that I would just encourage you to add in here. It's just some of, some rendering comparison with whatever else is sort of in the immediate area.
Yeah.
And so how, how a home of this size would look in comparison with their homes.
Starting in fact, that they got up to the forty-five hundred is the parameters set by G F A. It wasn't a desire, we just were going with what we could see with information available. Uh, we're setback, so G F A is a little bit.
See, that's something else.
Yeah.
What you're saying there is what a lot of hits.
Right, correct.
Zoning wise setback.
Yeah.
The other consideration is really important for this work, aesthetic. It's not about, I'm allowed forty-five hundred square feet.
Right.
It's, does that forty-five hundred that I wanna build, is that compatible with what's next door, what's across the street?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you can see a couple of applications get hung up because they don't, it doesn't present that information or kind of stuff. And if there's a, you know, you wanna see the neighborhood. So I think I would expect every.
Assist, assisting with the plans.
Okay.
You don't want to always see a market research of the neighborhood as well.
Yes.
Yeah, or even just a a Google, like a Google pictures and how, you know, like put it in there and see how that would look.
I I honestly wasn't aware of that before coming in tonight, so being very glad.
It's not a requirement in code, but it's just a procedural.
I guess.
Very significant consideration, again, the word fix.
It is that honestly.
And then leaving here tonight. Constantly impetus to demolish the property regardless of all of those other processes. So that's something if I'm, you know, able to achieve that or to submit the permit process.
So this is really not a discussion, this is really an application for demolition.
No, it's a discussion.
It's just.
No, it's just, we're just discussing everything.
Yes, yeah. I've done it yet, but you know.
Okay, do you, anybody want, does everyone wanna discuss a demolition?
I don't know.
This, I mean.
It's not a historic, it's not in the historic district, it's not a contributing property. And you're saying that this has water damage, that you would not be able to correct or you would want to demolish anyway at some point in the future. Because that was the intent, the desire was to be able to demolish it at some point in the future. And so the question is, do we demolish now or later? Okay, I mean, this is a discussion item, not a thingy.
Right, so we're discussing all aspects of what we want to tell him.
But, yeah, so what we're trying to do is take this past the demolition. And prepare you to make the most efficient, compliant presentation that you can going forward. So they'll save you time, us time, and aggravation and frustration. Because people try to paint us as unreasonable when they're not cooperative.
So he was advised by the building department to come in front of us as the discussion item.
Okay.
Be- because of the, he wanted for, to find out how you guys felt about demo. Um, and he did not have a full set of plans, so that's why he was advised to come to you guys. Um, can come to you next month for the, with a full certificate of progress. Or an approval for a demo, um but he was advised to come to you with a discussion.
Okay, so so you 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 do know that these are what the excellent metrics, right?
What's that?
These, these are not renderings or anything like this, this is not representative of the project that you.
That's just an idea of what we were thinking we may do during the month of the year. Uh, so like a setup, we've only been working on this for three and a half weeks, so they're not a complete set of plans.
No.
Um, I was just coming here tonight to just discuss it rather than take an action.
Okay.
So I see an inherent problem.
What's that?
If we exercise the idea of like, go ahead, step one, and tear down the house. That's not any indication that we're even considering or looking at this house.
Right.
You don't wanna give the applicant a feeling that, well, you saw it, so we ripped down the house. And now we're asking for a house very similar to what you saw already.
That's just where I was going.
And we've been trying to get the building department to stop doing that. And I'm actually a little surprised, we had great, we had five good meetings where we didn't see any of these and now we're seeing them again. I don't know if it's just a push, kick the can down the road, but we're here to look at projects that are ready to go. I don't know if it's just a push, kick the can down the road, but we're here to look at projects that are ready to go, like.
Well, this is a discussion.
I, I, I know, and I, I had a feeling that, you forget, when I got asked to do this, I wanted to eliminate discussions. Because we can't be convinced we're being shown the best thing.
You're not.
If the application is, is not, really not showing us the best they could do. It's just, it's, it's.
But building, building department's defense, we have a discussion item opportunity right now. And when they come in front of us, in front of the building department, ask for a discussion item, we can't deny that.
Right.
So in the building, that's.
All right.
So let's return to the subject of the meeting then, okay, now that we've had this little banter, so. So what we, what we're saying is a couple things, okay, we're not looking at this, okay? And to accelerate your process, I think you should make a, a, a demolition application. That being said. The fuller your presentation and the fact that you really take into consideration. The characteristics of the neighboring properties. And make something contextual as much as you can within the guidelines of your client. Then things will move faster, okay? And you've heard our concerns about double story, double height windows and people looking into people's pools, right?
And massing.
You, you, you haven't heard about us, our concern about vegetation, but we, we don't like things too suburban in terms of landscaping plans. We like it to be more organic in, 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 in presentation. We don't like what's called suburban kind of architecture, that sort of thing that looks like you can get out of a book or online, right? And.
Massing.
And massing, and, and we don't like things to overwhelm neighboring properties. Those are things that, to the extent that you can avoid them, will, will help things move faster. Is there anything, anyone else wants to say or recommend, Dave?
No, I think that comes up. Okay, so I'm okay to go ahead and get the demolition application?
Yeah.
And, cause questions, there's like power line overhead going to the house, water and gas. Am I able to go ahead and have them disconnected in preparation?
That's part of demolition.
Or you have to get the demolition permit approved and then take this stuff.
Yeah, that's building department, that's, um.
That's not this board, they know.
Yeah, and just to be able to heads up, shutting the power and disconnecting and pulling back, it's not as easy as it sounds. It's, they have months and months and months.
Everyone mentioned you do that, you do the permit.
Really? You get the permit.
Yeah.
Permit first.
Permit.
First, the event, then permit.
Then you need that permit to go to those agencies to see if they will shut off.
No, you don't, no, you don't.
You need a.
No, you, no, you couldn't demolish.
I think, the other thing is, I think, everyone, before the next meeting, I think, we should stop, everyone should just go look at this house. I don't know if it, if I think it should be demolished right now, I don't know.
But can you, it's a twelve hundred square foot house.
Okay, but still, I, I, I just don't know.
Thank you.
Okay.
I was gonna say, that was my experience, it's like, there's no building permit unless it's all been shut off. A demo permit unless it's all been shut off.
Usually they want a building permit, they should have that sort of thing.
No. Cause that was hellish.
That's more than I have.
Somebody's mic is too close and it's being bumped by.
Is that me?
Yeah, it is you.
She can't go any further away from me.
It's this one, like picked up this one, yeah.
Pick it up.
Like do it, it moves.
The neck, there you go.
Okay, they have to read your mic. I was thinking the same thing.
Bethany, I think the two that you have in front of you, they just need to be separated so that it doesn't get feedback. Yeah, there you go.
Those microphones don't work.
Oh, okay.
All needed, just a little circle thing or.
Yeah, but we're still getting.
I'm good, Anthony's ready.
Okay.
So this is, house is one eighty Madison Street. This is house on the corner of Madison Street and Jermaine. Um, so.
Oh, the Rudishan house, is that what you mean?
Didn't this house come before us before?
So this is a pretty neat little house, it's pretty much, um, pretty intact, um, in pretty good condition. Hasn't really had too many changes to it over the years. Um, the proposal here is, uh, we've got to go to ZBA for this. But, uh, we wanted to do a little discussion item, uh, on this first. Um, so what we're proposing, no, no changes to the front facade at all. Um, existing windows, all that sort of stuff, uh, existing front door, all that's being kept. Um, really the only changes we're proposing are in the back of the house, uh, shed dormer coming off the back. And then you will see in the, um. For plan. Existing house, so the, the back is, there's a little kind of cutout in the corner with a little shed on it. So we're taking that out and basically just filling that in, bringing that out straight across the back. So that's it, um, yeah, this is the new dormer in the back, this is squaring off that back. So you're getting a total of ninety nine square feet, the house. Um, so it's a pretty small, um, addition that we're proposing.
Why are the chimneys so tall?
That's, that's what they are.
It's what it is.
Yeah, it is what it is.
Do you need to make the new one the same as the existing one?
Um.
It just sort of emphasizes.
We were actually, we were actually kind of just planning a building around it, to, to be honest with you.
But you had one new.
It's there already?
No, no, that's, let me see, yeah, well, they're all, they're all there, yeah.
It didn't show up to the front.
Maybe I didn't, uh.
I, I misunderstood, I didn't think that.
Yeah.
See, I'm not.
Oh, yeah, no, sorry, yeah, that, that's true.
It is there.
There it is.
Oh, yeah, we don't have to do that.
Yeah, yes, okay, yeah. Um, that's, that's all there, I think that was perfectly reasonable.
Fine.
Yeah.
Yep.
Are those doors on the?
Are you worried about something? I'm just curious that you wanted to make the discussion.
Me too.
Yeah.
Well, no, we're just doing this as a discussion because we have to go to ZBA. And, yeah, because this ZBA is now kind of requiring full sets of working drawings, we figured why not just come to check our pay.
Sounds familiar Dave.
You have something to do.
We're, we're still trying to, um, figure out exactly what variants we're gonna need. Both of them are gonna be very minor, but they're kind of a whole bunch of little ones, just because of the way the property is situated. Couple other things, um, we do have this big, uh, garage in the backyard, which is, um, existing non-conforming, um. Existing non-conforming, um, garage in the backyard. We're planning on turning that i- into an ADU, we recognize that we need a variance to do that, we are, that's one of the variances we're asking for. Um, you'll, you know, you'll say it's just a pretty plain wood frame building and just kind of developing that into an ADU. It's some new, new doors and little dormer.
Is, is it historic?
No. It's, uh, it looks like they, it's a very strange building, it looks like they built it to accommodate a boat storage over the winter. Uh, it's got a very tall, I mean, you, you'll see it if you go right down Jermaine there, it's like, the front, the, the garage door is like ten feet tall.
Oh, yes, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so the idea is to just, uh, turn that into a, um, accessory dwelling.
I mean, there's so much growth, you don't, it's even hardly see this house, I, I think, right?
Yeah, you know, and it's, 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 you, you see the front facade of Madison Street, what you don't realize is that it's actually a pretty big property for, um, sidecar, for the swimming pool, um.
Wow.
Yeah, so.
So the garage didn't exist in nineteen ninety four?
Not that, you believe I'm saying.
Okay, there you go.
It's always referenced as not a contributing function.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, yeah, I mean, we're, we're not, um, the foundation is not in great condition, so we're gonna have to do a little bit of work to that. But we're not going to raise a house, it's not in the budget and they don't need the, the program for it. Um, the windows are mostly original and intact, so we're gonna per- preserve all of them, all the original windows, uh, yeah.
Wonderful.
Okay.
Good, all right.
Sounds great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You can go up, have a great day.
Alright, so this is fifty three Raisum.
One is fifty three Raisum. Dormer and swimming pool.
We could have re- recommended some restaurants for you if you would know. Let's see, it's quarter to nine, um, no, we're in a good mood. Okay.
Sean Leonard, the architect. Um, we are here for discussion because we're making some proposals here that if, if you, the board feels is acceptable. We're, we need some variances, so, uh, with, with ZBA, so that's the reason why we're here. The, uh, just to give you, this is fifty three Raisum. And is the location of the, of the, of the property. And, um, there's a couple of things we're looking to do, if you are looking to renovate the house. Uh, the, the, but not, the front part of the house is a contributing part. And just to maybe give you another elevation, there you go. Uh, so, so this, this part here.
Right.
It is more of a contributing part of.
Original, yeah.
Original.
You're right.
This is an addition that was put on the back of the house, uh, that is kind of in disrepair and a little bit weird. And so we're looking to not, you know, we'll be coming back to you again for this, but we're looking to take this down and clean it up. So that it would actually have a proper, just a clean roof line of, of a gable bend that came out the back. And not all these flat roofs and it's really, really weird, uh, in the back, it's got all these little weird things going on. So we're looking to just kind of clean that up. But one of the reasons why I'm here and discussing with you is, the second floor is not a very big second floor. It is where the, um, the primary suite is, is up there now. Uh, but it's only one room, so you go up there and just one room up there. And we're looking for is the idea of adding a dormer to the front of the building there. So we can have a little bit more room to make the room a little bit more functional. Uh, there's not even a closet up there at the moment, um, the way it's kind of configured.
So question, I was distracted. The historic part of the house.
Is.
Is, is that part of the house? And what you refer to as the addition, that's not in the, that's not in the nineteen.
Correct.
That's not in the survey, nine, uh.
Not a contributing.
It's not part.
We need to be a little more precise about it, okay? So the entire building, which is standing, is technically a contributing resource in the district. It's the whole house.
So, okay.
There's a whole section in the front and there's a newer.
Initially original.
And so what you're saying is, I mean, that, that it's in, it's in the report.
Mm-hmm.
Um, bigger aesthetic issue is the dormer.
Right.
But we're not up to that yet, so, yeah, so we've determined that that back section has been added and added and.
Right.
Uh, it is not the core historic building.
Correct, the core historic building is here. And that's the part that we're looking, we're not looking to make any other changes other than the dormer.
Correct.
To the house, we're not looking.
Understood, but on, on the, on the newer sections.
Yes.
Are those, you, should they be raised, should they be taken down?
There's, there's no reason not to, that's, that's not.
Okay, that's my question.
Yeah, we either looked and decided that there had probably been an earlier back extension, a kitchen. Yes.
That had probably, it must have been taken down and replaced with what is standing there today.
Okay.
So if you were to take down what's there now and reconfigure it for whatever your reasons are, you're not removing anything of historic character.
Okay, thank you, you answered the question, thanks.
And so it's like, you know, many houses, modest, one story houses of this period have gotten these dormers either front, back or both. Because that's the only way you can make that upper.
Viable.
Happen. And even though it's, it's wonderful to see the ones that haven't been, you know, it's still, I mean, as early as the late nineteenth century, they were. Putting all the dormers.
Oh, yeah.
Independent ones or shed dormers like this, they carry your cords. So it's, it's well established precedent in the village to improve along those lines, and I think this is appropriate.
Can I add, I had a comment on the homeowner?
Yes.
My name's Alex Matheson, and I should just clarify, I'm on the ZBA, but I'm not here representing the ZBA, I'm here representing myself. I just want to say that because I'm a ZBA member, I grew up in Psychoponic, I've been in Psychoponic for twenty-three years. I'm on the ZBA, so I'm very sensitive to not over, um, overbuilding. So I'm very much in favor of what you guys are trying to do. As a result of that, I had the GFA, can you just, this, one, one, I had the GFA to put a two story building back here. And I didn't do it because I wanted to minimize the changes to the scale, the volume, the kind of historic nature of it. As you can see from the second page, you know, in our view anyway, we really cleaned this up, so it's a much more simple, elegant structure than all these kind of pieces. Then you see here, well, you know, it's this kind of pieces, but you gotta roof and so on, to really clean it and make it simple. Um, but the dormer, because we're not doing a whole second floor, increasing the volume by that much. We're dealing with a very small second floor, it only is enough for a bedroom and a bathroom. So there's not a lot of headroom, we have a dormer in the back which helps, but it would really help to have a dormer in the front to allow an actual closet. Um, that a little more light and so on, so we feel, we feel like, we hope it's a fairly modest request and it's helpful to hear that, that there is some.
Yeah, he's kind of, he's not pooh-poohing it.
So Carrie, next time, would you put an applicant like this first so they can teach the other applicants how it's the best to make a presentation?
A lawyer or, or an architect, she was complaining about having come and not being finished.
Yeah.
Right.
Pay him close to two thousand dollars, so just for waiting four hours, so.
Oh, my goodness.
It, 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 it has occurred to me that people who repeat here make the money than people who go through the process once.
Yeah.
He's on, he's on.
And I just want to make that sound, it's a review. And then I guess also since we're here, you know, the dormer is one thing, but just to make sure there aren't any objections to this kind of simple structure. They don't have a matching window, exactly, uh, so same stuff, bump sides.
It's a cleaner.
It's a little hard to discern, honestly.
What's that?
It, it's a little hard to discern what you're doing on that extension from this distance, maybe because it's grayed. Or maybe because my eyesight is bad, but I just can't, yeah, I'd like to see the detail a little bit.
Some symmetry and some.
Much better.
Yep.
Yeah, much better.
So is that shingle?
Yes. So, well, this is, it's shingle, it's true currently shingle, but this is all clavbered siding.
Clavbered, yes.
So we're gonna match that, so it's probably surrounding around the whole.
Oh, so you're gonna have it.
So wait a minute, what's, so the whole thing is gonna be what?
This, this right now is shingle. Think this is shingle too, the front, the front is clavbered, but I'm gonna do clavbered around the whole thing, see, clavbered.
Front is clavbered.
Oh.
So everything will be clavbered, everything will match, and it's a nice, very nice style.
That's what you'd like. Okay.
And so everything will be clavbered.
Um, on the historic part. It would not have been clavbered unless it was a little higher level house. So the fact that it has clavbered on the front, shingle on the side, would carry delivered, just don't know.
Oh, really?
Oh, yeah, yeah, definitely. Cause clavbered was more expensive, so you put your clavbered on the front because it's pretty. And then shingles on the side because they're cheap.
I mean, my predecessor did this.
Right.
I figured, I figured that's why she did it. If you guys don't have objection, uh, I would prefer clavbered, it is a little bit more expensive, but to me it's much nicer. So that would be my preference.
Is anything in the description that says, did you start the survey, I'm sorry, but.
Go to the video chain.
Yes.
And, and so now we have the front view and the side view, do we have, what's the back look like?
This is the back.
This is the back now.
Oh, okay.
And then it's gonna simplify, and by the way, these stairs.
Yeah, they.
Probably shrink in size and they're gonna, it's gonna be one railing coming here and then we want to kind of cascade.
And you'll show that when.
Yeah, that's a little grand.
Yes.
It's a little too grand, it's too big, but, um, so we have.
That was my feeling.
Also shrink that.
Zach, how we doing?
Yeah, okay, so the nomination form has it all clavbered.
Really? Well, there you go.
Oh, wow.
Okay.
So maybe the only other thing I think we need to be back on is, um, the fact that we are, uh, putting in a very small dipping pool. Um, and it's like twelve by eighteen, so it's very small. But, uh, and we're gonna be looking to the ZBA to, uh, to give me a variance to make it ten feet. But uh, and we're gonna be looking to the ZBA to uh to give me a variance to make it ten feet from the uh the neighbor's uh property line rather than fifteen. Required. And I, the other thing I should note is that I have neighbor, I have letters from all four neighbors, three behind behind and on the sides. And the one straight across, all supporting the whole clan, including specifically the the dormer. Uh, they all cited the dormer as a positive thing and.
So just.
Great.
That's great. Put it in the file or the application.
You 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 don't want it now.
No, no, no.
When you make your formal application.
What we want now is to say good night to you. Yes, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, definitely. You're good.
I move that we close the meeting.
Oh, second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
So.
No resistance.